Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Morro Bay Harbor Advisory Board Special Meeting for November 16th, 2017, here at the Community Center. This is a special meeting that has been arranged for a strict purpose. We have only one item on the agenda, and all comments will be directed toward that item, which is the activities that take place in the Back Bay portion of the Morro Bay. This is a public information forum, and so it is not a political, nor is it a place to debate the activities. Its purpose is purely informative. We do have a quorum with four people present, and let's see, Mr. O'Brien is missing, Mr. Doughty is missing, and Mr. Maloney. The format of this meeting is that there are a list of presenters, six or eight presenters, who will make their presentations. The presenters, if you will, please wait at the podium, so that the board may then direct their questions to you. After all presenters have spoken their piece, then it will be time for public comment. If you wish to participate in public comment, there are slips over by the door on the table, so that we have an idea of how many people will be speaking at public comment. We would appreciate it if you would pick up one of those and give it to Eric, so that we know the numbers. We want to thank the Harbor Department for arranging, for inviting the participants here, and making arrangements for this meeting. They do a really good job, and are very, very willing at all times to help out the board. The presenters that we have are not necessarily in this order, but they will be California Fish and Wildlife, Rock Kayak, State Parks, Grassie Bar Oyster Company, National Estuary Program, Pacific Wildlife Care, the Marine Mammal Center, and finally, the Morro Bay So if we can now begin with California Fish and Wildlife, to bring us their information. Thank you.
Hi, I'm with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. My name's Taylor Durico. This is Kevin Hare.
Gentlemen's name once more, please.
My name is Kevin Hare.
Thank you.
And we're here just to touch briefly on the topic of activities that take place within the Morro Bay Back Bay.
Can you read your positions, please?
I'm a fishing wildlife officer with the Department of Fish and Wildlife. I work on the patrol boat Bluefin out of Morro Bay.
I as well. We're both wildlife officers, we're both assigned to the patrol boat. Bluefin is docked here in Morro Bay. It's a six-to-five-foot patrol boat that we do offshore patrols. We also patrol locally in the county, Los Sosse Marine Ephesus.
So, within the waters of Morro Bay State Park, there's two NPAs. So, Morro Bay State Marine Reserve and the Morro Bay State Marine Recreational Management Area.
What's an NPA, please?
An NPA is a marine-protected area, so it's an area that's been set aside for conservation and preservation of fish species, wildlife species, and the natural reef or barrier in that area. So, just protecting the fish and wildlife in that. Different marine-protected areas will have a different set of regulations, so based on if it's a state marine reserve, a state marine recreational management area, a conservation area, the regulations within that will change for what you can or cannot fish for, or take in that situation, or hunt. So, within Morro Bay's Back Bay, we have the state marine reserve. Within the state marine reserve, which is located, they're given by AGPS boundary, so the state marine reserve is the area below the mean high tide line within Morro Bay, east of longitude 120 degrees, 50 decimal 34 west. So basically, the mouth of Morro Bay Harbor, all the way to the, oh, sorry, not the mouth of Morro Bay Harbor. The state marine reserve is within the east side of Morro Bay, so from...
So, the reserve is kind of in the back part of the bay by the State Park Marina. So basically, the estuary part of the Back Bay, that's the reserve. In the reserve, there's no take of any, you cannot fish back there, it's closed to all fishing. And the Marine Recreational Management Area, which encompasses the entire harbor from the entrance all the way towards the Back Bay, you can only take finfish. There's no more take of any invertebrates, so no crabbing, no take of any clamming in the Back Bay. And that, the recreational management area extends all the way into Los Sosse's area, to approximately Pasadena Point, near Pasadena Park. Anything south of that point is also part of the marine recreational management area, but it is closed to all fishing. So there's no take in the very back part, south of Pasadena Point. But everything north going through the harbor entrance, there's only the take of finfish. In that Back Bay and in the harbor, you need a fishing license depending on where you fish, but a state fishing required license is required for anybody over 16 years of age.
In addition, in that area, we also have the oyster aquaculture, which is permitted within the state marine recreational management area. I believe they will touch on that later with the oyster aquaculture. I don't know if they're here. For the wildlife area and back, it's, Morro Bay Wildlife area encompasses a certain portion of the Morro Bay Back Bay, also marked by a set of boundaries that are found on the California Fish and Wildlife website. Within the wildlife area, there is a set of boundaries marked by a hunt zone, in which you can take black brandt and various kinds of waterfowl.
Do you have some charts with you?
I do have some charts. I have them located on the table.
Can we get AGP to put one up for us?
Of course.
No, they don't have the overhead.
I would don't want an overhead.
No, no overhead. Okay, okay, thanks. Okay. Sorry. Sorry. Absolutely.
Yes, please.
Wonderful. Thanks. You bet. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, when I, you have a map there of wildlife area. So, our wildlife area, we have three different types of wildlife areas. This is a type C wildlife area, which means it's basically open access. There's not a reservation system that you have to apply to go on to the wildlife area. It's not closed, certain days and weeks open year-round. There's only hunting allowed during the brandt season. This year, it started November 9th, and it runs through December 15th. The wildlife area is open for hunting for wildlife, or waterfowl, from December, November 9th through the end of waterfowl season, which is January 28th. As you see on the map, the areas of the wildlife area is well-marked, and you have to hunt within those wildlife and the boundaries and the mean high tide. You cannot shoot before 7:00 a.m. You're restricted to how many shotgun shells you can bring with you. You can have no more than 25 shotgun shells with you. You have to stay within the boundaries of the wildlife area.
Can you just briefly, because this is being recorded for the public, as a public information, we have, the board has the maps, but if you could describe verbally for us, please, the wildlife area? You know, for instance, its northerly boundary is approximately even with the state park and so on.
To clarify, the wildlife area or the hunt zone?
Wildlife area. Wildlife, well, is there a difference?
This is hunt zone.
So, the wildlife area and the hunt area are not the same? They're the same part, but the wildlife area is much bigger than the hunt area?
Oh, thank you. The hunt area.
So, where you can hunt is different. It's the same as the wildlife area, but there's not, some areas of the wildlife area where you can hunt, there's some areas you can't hunt. So, the wildlife area, basically, it begins pretty much off of Windy Cove area of the state park, off of North Star Park Road, extends out to the Sands Spit, goes along the Sands Spit south towards Shark Lagoon, goes along Shark Lagoon, along the Back Bay. I forget the name of the road back there, but it goes along the Back Bay along, and then it goes towards Sweet Springs. It's going to be off of Sweet Springs, though, so it's going to be offshore of Sweet Springs, going towards the Baywood Park Pier, going towards Pasadena Point. It's going to be offshore Pasadena Point, though, and then going extending along Reserve, back towards State Park Marina, and then basically making a circle from there. Not all of that area is huntable. You'd have to look on the map, a person who's going to be hunting would have to look on a map and know their location where they're going to be. Most of it is accessible by boat only. The areas that are not accessible by boat are towards the southern end of the Back Bay, more towards the Shark Lagoon area as you're walking along, or south of Sweet Springs. The area is really well-marked. Our department, every year, goes out and makes sure that signs are well-marked showing where the hunt areas are, and you can see them, they're a bright yellow sign, sort of lock them on the bay, or if you're offshore in the bay, you'd be able to see them.
And then, again, both of the maps provided, both the Morro Bay Wildlife Area Hunt Zone and the Morro Bay Wildlife Area map itself, can be found on the California Department of Fish and Wildlife website, specifically under the Morro Bay Wildlife Area section.
Are there, in terms of the fin fishery, are there seasons for different species?
So, when you're fishing in the ocean, there are different seasons. Generally, when people are fishing in the Back Bay, they're mostly targeting sharks, or rays, or halibut. They usually do better different kinds of year for those species. There are, sometimes you can encounter rockfish, and there's a season on rockfish when fishing on a boat. That season generally runs April through the end of, through December. But year-round, you can fish from a boat in the Back Bay, but it's all species-specific, depending what you're fishing for. But generally, if the people are fishing for sharks, rays, or halibut, there's no close season. But if they are fishing for rockfish, it would be a close season. And you can fish from shore as well, and from shore, there's no close season, no close hours.
Dana, did that answer your question? Okay. Any other questions from the board?
One question is that, on the limitations for the actual hunting, do you, as the California Wildlife, do you feel that there's any type of, you know, controversy that we're a bird sanctuary here in Morro Bay, and you're bordering that? I mean, has there been a lot of discussion on that aspect, whether this will be continuing in the future?
Well, I mean, I don't really, that's kind of above me what's going to happen. I know that it's a bird sanctuary. There's been a lot of controversy about the hunting, a lot of pros, a lot of cons. I'm not going to give an opinion about it, but there's been a lot of controversy, a lot of talk. I, that kind of answers your question in a way.
Well, I mean, in the sense is that if we, if, I'm not going to say for or against either, but if a person had an issue with it, who would they contact?
Generally, we get a lot of people contacting us, either complaining for or against it. Probably, we're the most visual person they would contact, because we're out in the field. We get, biologists might get contacted as well, but every year, we do get generally a lot of complaints either for or against it from the public. If that kind of answers your question as well.
Well, I mean, again, as you said, it's beyond your pay grade, so where is there a place that you can complain, that there would be some, you know, answers on this? I mean, is it these, is, who at the state level would handle a complaint?
Yeah, I guess maybe the commission, somebody in the crowd set. I mean, I don't know, it would be, I don't know who would handle, I mean, I've taken complaints from like the public, but if somebody wanted to write to somebody, I don't know exactly who they would write to.
Dana?
So, in your experience, I'm guessing you've been here for a number of years?
Yeah, approximately seven years.
As far as violations in the bay, do you find that, what kind of numbers are you looking at?
You know, I don't have like exact numbers in front of me about how many violations we have. Generally, the violations aren't that many. Most of the hunters know the law, and they follow the rules, and a lot of them know how controversial it is, so they don't want to do anything to mess that up. So generally, most people are following the rules. We do get people that do break the law. In the past years, there's been people hunting outside the zones, not knowing where the zones are, and then something simple of not having the proper tags is usually what we're getting. Because when you waterfowl hunt, you're required to have a hunting license, a state duck stamp and a federal duck stamp, and so some people will fail to get those stamps before they go hunting.
How about fishing?
Fishing, you're required to have a fishing license unless you're under 16 years of age.
Yeah, do you find any, do you find a number of violations, say, for clamming or crabbing or anything that's not allowed?
We do get violations in the marine-protected area of people like without licenses, taking species that are not allowed to take. It's been pretty well-publicized, there's not a whole lot. Most people, a lot of the public knows that they can't clam or crab, but it does happen. So, a lot of those violations, taking what they can in the marine-protected area, and then a lot of licensing violations as well.
Thank you.
What about the numbers of hunters and fishermen in the area? Are they increasing or decreasing? I presume they would be decreasing over the years?
As far as studies, I don't have that information in front of me, or I know that they have done studies as far as how many hunters are back there. Fishermen, fishermen's always been pretty popular. I don't know if there's been any decrease in fishermen from the harbor ranch into the Back Bay that's very popular. A lot of people fish on the northeast piers on the weekends, and it's very popular at night fishing inside the entire part of the bay from shore. So, there's quite a lot of use of fishing activity, hunting activity. It's only seasonal, and it's got to do with the high tide mainly, because that's when they're going to be able to access the areas they want to hunt. So, it kind of depends on kind of the weather and kind of how many birds there are as well.
Do you patrol?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Do you patrol?
Yes, I do patrol the Back Bay area.
How, daily, a couple times a day? How often does somebody go back there?
It kind of depends what kind of direction, because we're assigned to the patrol boat, so if we're on the patrol boat, we can't go back there. It just kind of depends on the weather and kind of what's going on. As far as like a number, I don't have a number of how many often there's a patrol back there by all of our wardens in the county, but it does quite happen a lot.
Okay. Thank you.
And how does patrol? I mean, we're pretty familiar with the conditions in the Back Bay, that by that I mean real skinny water typically. So, how is it patrolled?
It's usually patrolled by either by foot, or sometimes if we can, take a small boat back there, we can, but it has to be based on a high tide if we can get back there. But most of the time, it's by foot or vehicle.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We do appreciate your coming in and giving us this report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list is Tony Foster from Rock Kayak.
Good evening. My name is Tony Foster. I have a rock kayak here in Morro Bay on the Embarcadero, 845 Embarcadero that is. I'm not exactly the Back Bay kayaking rental that's, of course, there at the kayak shack, but we do have a lot of our kayakers going into that region, of course. We do promote a lot of the marine life and things like that at our place, of course, so we do want, of course, people to enjoy all the sea otters and sea lions and all the different birds that we have out there. Yeah, any questions?
Questions from the board?
You have lots of rentals.
Yes, 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 yes.
I mean, which is a good thing.
Yeah, definitely.
And do people, do people mention to you where they go?
Yeah, actually, we talk about that a lot, because the tides are usually predating exactly what direction they're going to be going. So, when they are doing the Back Bay, which we're talking about today, usually that's, you know, with that, hopefully, an outgoing tide, or maybe just the incoming tide, and they're going to ride it back out. For my business, I don't promote a lot of the Back Bay, just simply because of the difficulties with the tides and the shallow areas that we have back there. Of course, I do have, you know, occasionally, we are talking about some hunting. I do have occasionally during the November and December, I do have a few people talk about there's hunting going on back there, and there, you know, gunfire, and you can hear some, you know, shotguns going off now and again. But, you know, we tend to be able to just seem to work together, and so far, I haven't had any incidents where I've had anyone threatened with my particular business, but as I've always thought, it's, you know, if we could all sort of work together, we can keep everything all open, because we all want the Back Bay to be open to our usage, and I don't want that close to our stand-up paddlers, or our kayakers, or canoeers, or even our hunters, if we can do this safely.
You're, given your location in the 800 block, which is essentially central, I guess, to the business portion of the Embarcadero, do you have any sense for what percentage, approximate percentage of your clientele will go, accesses the Back Bay?
Being that I am, you know, quite a distance from, I'm at the 12 marker, and, you know, the 20 marker is where the Natural History Museum, and basically where you sort of think of where the Back Bay starts, and so I'm a good mile and a half or so from that location. So, typically, I would say probably 5% and 10% of my business is probably going back there. A very low percentage of my business goes back there. I typically tell people that 20 marker is the end of the main channel, and go at your own risk beyond that point, and usually, I'm always promoting that that needs to be extreme high tide, 4.5, five and above, so we don't have anybody getting stuck in the Back Bay, for good reason. We don't need Eric and company trying to fish our people out of the mud back there. I'm all about safety first, and so we, and in fact, I just want to thank these guys, all the Harbor Commission. You guys do a great job, and we really appreciate on those occasions when the wind blows really hard, and sort of people can't quite make it back the way we'd like them to, that you guys are there for us on those rare occasions, too. So, anyway, just wanted to throw that out there.
Dana?
Do you notify people as far as the rules, engaging with hunters, as far as staying away?
You know, I haven't been always that, knowing exactly, I was just talking to Matt here, and I just thought, hunting started already? I hadn't heard, actually, any of the shotgun going off lately, so I was a little bit like, oh, I didn't know it was open. So, my bad on that one. I should know those things, because I usually think of December as when I usually think of the hunting going on with the brandt back there. So, I will, in fact, and need to at this point, make sure I do tell everyone that is going in that direction, that be careful that we do have hunting going on in the Back Bay. So, maybe if we can make sure that those information, things kind of get out a little bit better, maybe if there's, to all of our kayak places, maybe if there's a little information sheet or something, we could just have posted up on our board, because I do post all the things such as no alcoholic beverages, no drink, you know, none of that stuff, and of course, protecting our wildlife. We have the Sea Otter Savvy on stickers on all of our kayaks, and we post it on our window, and also the seabirds savvy also, too, which is important.
Dana?
Dana asked my question.
Okay. Bill? Okay. Have you had people get stuck or not be able to get back from the Back Bay?
Fortunately, not. I've been very fortunate.
So, do you have any way of communicating with them, or?
I have everyone give me their cellphone number before they go, so that's kind of a mandatory thing on our liability form, is that I have a cellphone communication, and I usually get a pseudo sort of itinerary of what they're doing ahead of time. I usually like to know how many, how long they're going out for, maybe if they're going in that direction. You know, if they mention about the Back Bay, I'm quick to say, you know, what's your intent? How long do you intend to be back there? Get out in a hurry before the tide is receding and you can't get out, because we can't afford to have anyone stuck back there. We had that super tide, I know it was about a year and a half, two years ago, and we had several people stuck in the Back Bay. That was a nightmare for people, so we don't need that, yeah.
Just clarification.
Yes.
Is, you said 4.5 feet. Isn't it really like 2.5 feet it really needs to be for the Back Bay, or am I wrong?
Well, for my business, I don't even, I don't even think about those terms. I think of something really high, something that's flooded.
I see. Okay.
Because if they even want to do the creek back there, it better be flooded, because I can't see what's going on from my location. If I was at the kayak shack, obviously, I'm looking out at the Back Bay, and I can have a little bit better idea of where, and I am not as, the channels are a little bit, you know, they're a little hard to follow if you're back there, especially if you're doing the creeks. The one that goes along Grassy Island's a little bit easier, there is a couple little PVCs and things like that that kind of give you a little bit of a guide to go through. Yeah, it's a little ambiguous, but yeah, it's so tricky that I don't want to promote the Back Bay for my particular business, being honest. It's beautiful as it is, so.
Very good, Tony. Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys, and thank you for all of your volunteer service, too. Thank you very much.
Next on our list is State Parks Kara O'Brien.
I'm Kara O'Brien. I'm a state park interpreter, too, with California State Parks, and I have a few special projects, and want to thank Tony, because he mentioned seabirds and sea otters, and those are some of the campaigns that we're working on. So, our main messaging for Morro Bay in general, and the Back Bay, is respecting wildlife in Morro Bay, and one of our projects that's in its second year, we just completed our second year of the Sea Life Stewards program. It's a kayak volunteer program, and we did receive a grant from the Morro Bay National Estuary Program that allowed us to buy equipment for our volunteers. In our first year, we had 25 volunteers on land and water, and about 25 to 30 in our second season that just finished. They conduct citizen science, so they're looking at disturbance and what's going on out there. So, they have a data sheet that they need to fill out for their shifts, and they're helping visitors to experience the marine wildlife without causing disturbance. So, the goal is protecting marine wildlife and protecting visitors from marine wildlife as well. And overall, we're wanting to help marine wildlife thrive by reducing human disturbance to otters, harbor seals, sea lions, seabirds, and other marine wildlife, and that can include eelgrass sometimes, and different things that we're seeing in the bay. As you know, it's a changing scene daily. So, that is basically what they're doing out there. They launch from two locations, so we're very fortunate to work with the Bluefin crew, and they've allowed us to store kayaks and the Harbor Department. So, they are on the dock there, we store kayaks there, and then we also have them in a shed, so we launch from the kayak ramp in Morro Bay Marina. So, two different locations. They run pretty much starting in May, and we go through, we went a little longer this year. We went all the way to the end of September, but we probably stopped about three weekends before the end, but then they were back out to help with Sea Otter Awareness Week. The Seabird Protection Network is a special project. It goes from Point Sur to Point Magoo, and so Morro Bay and the Back Bay are part of the Seabird Protection Network chapter. It started up with the Greater Fairlawn National Marine Sanctuary. It comes from oil spill restoration money. I've been working on the project. This is my sixth year, and we were really fortunate, because it's a five-year grant, but it got extended, because the Torch Trustee Council liked what we were doing. So, we're providing seabird outreach and education. So, we're not literally out there on the Back Bay or on the water besides the Sea Life Stewards, but we are working around the bay, so we're talking to schools, we're going to library programs, Los Sosse's library, Morro Bay library, Paso Robles library, and we're providing outreach. And the main goal, again, is helping reduce human disturbance to nesting and roosting seabirds. So, Back Bay obviously has shorebirds and so much wildlife going on, so we're teaching kayakers, people hiking on the trails, just to give wildlife space, and really to pay attention. So, they're looking for wildlife noticing them, they're looking for wildlife in distress, which you'll hear more about, and just kind of knowing what wildlife is doing. And as soon as you enter wildlife a certain distance, we say five kayak lengths for the Sea Life Stewards, but as soon as wildlife notices you, you're already changing their behavior. You're already putting them at risk for getting too cold. And the main goal again is helping reduce human disturbance to nesting and roosting seabirds. So Back Bay obviously has shorebirds and so much wildlife going on. So we're teaching kayakers, people hiking on the trails, just to give wildlife space and really to pay attention. So they're looking for wildlife noticing them, they're looking for wildlife in distress, which you'll hear more about, and just kind of knowing what wildlife is doing. And as soon as you enter wildlife a certain distance, we say five kayak lengths for the Sea Life Stewards, but as soon as wildlife notices you, you're already changing their behavior. You're already putting them at risk for getting too cold, for not being able to get back to their nest to feed their young. So these are the things that we teach about and we do through really fun ways. We dress people up as seabirds. We have adaptation games where they get to challenge themselves to compete and learn how seabirds feed. So if you want to play games later, we could do that. Or if you want to come out and volunteer with us, we'll sign you up. Again, it's, the main goal is just letting people know that wildlife, this is, we share this neighborhood, this beautiful community with wildlife. And so we're doing it in a friendly and fun way and sometimes we're literally putting our kayaks just before people would run right over the otters with their stand-up paddleboards. And we're just trying to really get people to know that our actions make a difference for the safety and survival of wildlife, our neighbors. I also am the co-chair for the San Luis Obispo Marine Protected Area Collaborative. You're all welcome to be a part of the collaborative if you're interested. We are getting the word out, we work kind of on a three-pronged approach. There's a law enforcement component, there's a resource science study component. So we work with Cal Poly and Jim Webb with the Cambria Fishing Club. And then we also have the outreach education component, which is what I do. And so we have education pieces, everything from interpretive panels that talk about our fabulous marine protected areas, which expand over the Back Bay as you heard from Fish and Wildlife. So our goal is to increase awareness, protection, and enjoyment of the marine protected areas, NPAs. I'm sorry, we say NPAs because we're always talking to ourselves about the NPAs, but they are marine protected areas. And we like to explain to people that there are parks underwater. So you may not exactly be able to see everything under there, however, we are getting two underwater drones as part of a grant that's coming up and we're really looking forward to using those for education as well as monitoring.
That would be fun, huh?
Yeah, pretty exciting. One of our first projects we did is on visitor TV. If you've stayed at any of our local hotels, you know they have the closed circuit. Also in the airports where you can learn about what is in our area. So we basically have like ads about the marine protected areas and what you can see, what you can do, and how to enjoy it without impacting wildlife. And we just received a new grant, a small grant, and it is for a coastal kids' activity booklet. We're really excited. We had our first meeting today. Again, you are welcome if you want to be on our committee to come and help us with that. And we're working to let California's coastal kids know about marine protected areas, that they have these fabulous, beautiful underwater parks and what's under there and why they should care. We live on an ocean planet and it's our life support system. So we're just letting people know that we're so lucky to have these special places and what they do for us, how they keep humans healthy as well as wildlife. We will have an estuary page, so we're working with the estuary program. We're lucky to have Rachel Pass on our committee for the kids' activity booklet, so we're really looking forward. It's actually going to be about all the marine protected areas, so it's a statewide thing, but it's nice here that we have some experts on estuary. So the shared goals of all of these outreach education programs that span Morro Bay and larger geographic areas is that we want to create a wildlife viewing norm. And we're really fortunate to work with Tony and all our different fabulous businesses around the bay and they've really been supportive of putting those Sea Otter Savvy kayak stickers that have tips about how not to change wildlife's behavior. It makes a really big difference. So we're creating a wildlife viewing norm. We want people to understand and identify with ocean wildlife, to understand that they have a right to be here as much as we have a right to be here. We can interact and we can enjoy the space together. We can share space. And we want them to develop an ethical sense of our shared responsibility as stewards for wildlife and just sharing really simple tips for wildlife protection, not only while you're on the water, but even if you go back home to Arizona, Bakersfield, Germany, that we all live in watersheds and we can all make a difference and it doesn't matter if it's local or global, we're all part of stewards for wildlife wherever you live. Basically, we want people to care about the resources so that they'll care for the resources. On the left is our Seabird Safe Campaign. Tony was great and he put stickers on kayaks about the Seabird Protection Network. And then I'm working closely with Jenna Bentall at Sea Otter Savvy and we're respecting the NAP, so we're celebrating our wildlife. And it goes beyond this. These are just two of the key species that we're working on because specifically we have funding, but it's an ethic for all wildlife. And you can learn more at the seabirdprotectionnetwork.org and seaottersavvy.org. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Is that where somebody would be able to call to volunteer if they were interested in volunteering for any of those groups?
Absolutely. SeabirdProtectionNetwork.org or Sea Otter Savvy.
Okay. Bill?
No.
Gene?
Thank you.
Dana?
Thank you.
No, I do have a question on the seabirds. Is there any restriction on you can, what you can do to deter seabirds from, say, getting on your boats?
Yes. So you are, it is a little tricky because when we're building houses or living close to the ocean or we have boats and birds are trying to create nests and different things. So if you have a problem with birds, you definitely need to get a permit from Fish and Wildlife to deal with relocating or hazy animals. So that's out of my scope, but yeah.
Okay.
It's a challenge, isn't it?
Oh, you have no idea.
You know that guano's fabulous fertilizer for the ocean though. It smells really bad, but boy does it make for a fabulous estuary. It's the way I look at it, right? I used to scrub the benches on Anacapa Island every day before the visitors would come out, so yeah, I could relate. I could totally relate.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cara. Next on our list is Grassi Bar Oyster Company. George?
I do have a few slides. Hi, I'm George from Grassi Bar Oyster Company. And I'll quickly go over what we're doing. I know you have Neil on your committee, so you know a lot about oysters already probably. I wanted to zoom in on this map that is put out by the California Department of Public Health. And this shows our state water bottom leases that are, were set up and they are managed and created by the Fish and Game Commission, the State Fish and Game Commission. And I wonder, do I have a little pointer, if I had any chance? Ah, yes, I do. Okay. These round areas with the hatch, with the hatching are areas where, that are too close to marinas or areas of potential sources of pollution where we're not allowed to grow oysters. So that's why they put those hatched areas. This is the State Park Marina here. And this wing-shaped thing is my large oyster lease. And this is Neil's down here. It kind of hugs along the Los Osos Baywood area. And then there's one more oyster lease here. It's a 15-acre one down here and that's mine too. So I have two leases and this is Neil's here. And the, and so these are, I like, you know, I think of these leases as treasures, that they're special things that were created a long time ago in the 30s by the state in order to foster and encourage aquaculture, oyster culture mainly. And they're pretty rare. You know, we have these here in Morro Bay. You have to go up to Tamales Bay to get to see other state water bottoms. We, and the one that, the ones that were in Point Reyes Estuary are no longer there. So, so I think these, you know, these are special things designated for aquaculture that are, that we want to protect and hope that they will continue. This is kind of how we grow oysters. These are bags of oysters on the bottom at low tide and they're attached to a rope stretched across the bottom and the oysters just lay on the bottom. It's a simple method in contrast to Neil's that have flotation on each one and they go up with the tides. And so we have a little different method. Ours is a little more simple, doesn't have the flotation. And, but the flotation has advantages for making jostling the oysters and they stay, they get washed at every high tide, whereas ours, before we can sell ours, we have to put them on an off-bottom rack and so that they will purge any silt that might be inside them. And then when the tide comes in, we grab the bags of oysters that are ready to bring in and throw them on our boat and take them back to our dock that's floating out there on our lease. And we have a table there and we sort through them by hand into different size classes and the ones that are ready to sell, we will bag up and take them in to our markets. And so the oysters that grow, that we raise and Neil raises are Pacific oysters. They're native to Japan originally, but they've been here on our coast for many years and they're fast-growing and, and they, if they're properly taken care of, they have quite a good value and they're highly sought after in markets such as the high-end oyster bars in San Francisco just love our oysters. They love the flavor of the Morro Bay oysters and they can sell for as much as $3 or $4 per oyster at an oyster bar up there. And we get more like less than a dollar each for ours when we sell them, depending on how much effort we put into selling them. If we sell them in large quantities to a wholesaler, we might only get 60 cents per oyster. But we, you know, I, in 2016, my farm grew over a million, sold over a million of these. And Neil is similar, a little smaller, but it creates, you can see that our bay has the potential to be a significant economic engine. You know, we, we're only using a small number of those acres that are out there and still producing over a million oysters a year that have an end value of, you know, three, two or three million dollars easily. So, so there is a lot of potential for Morro Bay to be known as a great oyster-producing area and, and being, you know, an important part of our, of our Morro Bay character. And so, but to make it work, it's all about clean water. Going back to this thing, this map, this green area shows the area that is, I'm actually allowed to sell oysters out of and this larger area is prohibited. This is Neil's area. I think he's gained a few more acres by sampling and he may have changed a little bit. That's his area and then all this area is prohibited. This area is all prohibited. So most of the acreage in Morro Bay, even though we're paying for it, is not, we're not allowed to sell oysters out of. And that's because of the very rich estuary we live in and all the seabirds, mostly. We, the, the water has to meet stringent water quality standards and that is measured by taking the average fecal coliform content of the water over a long period, like three years. And at a number of different sampling stations, these are water quality sampling stations that we regularly sample. And the average of the last 30 samples over the last three years has to be below a certain threshold. And if it goes over that, the state says this, this water body no longer meets the criteria for a shellfish harvesting bay. And Morro Bay is just on the border, barely makes it. It really, if the health department were lazier, they would just say, you know, Morro Bay's not cutting it, we're going to close it. Because they, but instead they go to a lot of lengths. They go, oh, this area's not cutting it, we're going to cut that off. And then, and then even in the open area, they close it for many months out of the year. They'll say that you're closed for this long rainfall period or even dry periods. I've been closed September, October, and November, and I'll be closed all December, irregardless of rain, just because the fecal coliform content or samples have been too high in those months during dry weather, that it no longer makes the, cuts it over there during those months. So it's actually really tough. We've been closed a lot. This shows how many months we're close to harvesting in different years. I start, this is my first year, we were closed half the year. We had some pretty good years during the drought when we had a lot of dry weather. And then last year, we had quite a lot of rain in the rainy season, it was a wet year. And then they closed me down for October, November, December. So that brought us up to a really, a lot, you know, over seven months being closed this year. So it was a pretty rough year, we're having a kind of a tough time. And so that brings us to what Neil and I are both trying to develop on the waterfront, which is a process called depuration, where you have a building, you have tanks of purified water and the water is ultraviolet light treated and you put your oysters in this purified water and they purge their digestive system, their guts, and they get all clean inside and then you can sell them. But it's a highly regulated process and it has to be, you know, really nice facility. This facility wouldn't cut it in our state because it has all, the ceiling's probably not cleanable and the, it has to be super clean, super clean room type of thing. So it's kind of expensive to set up, a lot of permitting. And then we devote some time to cleaning up after ourselves. We pull out old stakes and junk and try to keep the debris. I know that's an issue with us oyster growers, is the debris. Our, our method of bottom culture has less floating stuff, so we don't have as much floating gear floating around. But we try to, we do clean up after ourselves and keep, it's important to us to keep a clean area. And we have to have a cleaning deposit with the state Fish and Game in which every year we have to estimate how much it would cost to clean up our whole farm and we have to have a bank account with that money unit. And, and so to keep that cost down and how much money we need in that bank account, we clean up after ourselves and that's just the right thing to do. And then we encourage kayakers and people to come through. We have lots of visitors and we try to be welcoming and share the place. We don't own, we have the right to grow oysters back there, but we don't have the right to keep people out if they're not going to bother or anything. So, and we don't really want to anyway. If they're just going to come and kayak, we'll enjoy the place, that's great. We don't, we like that. But then we can teach them about the oysters and we teach them about clean water, keeping the water clean and not polluting. And so, that's that. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Bill?
How long are your leases for, sir? If I may ask?
It's a 15-year lease. I got it in 2012, so it'll expire till 2027. But I have a 10-year renewal clause in that, so it'll probably renew for another 10 years if I'm still around. Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Gene?
Yeah, do you ever have any kayakers doing pilfering your oysters or oyster pirates?
You know, we haven't had much theft, definitely no theft, no poaching on a really big scale that we would notice, but we probably have had a, we think we've had a little bit where somebody grabs one of those oyster bags and, and so nothing, nothing obvious or big, but yeah.
Okay. Another question. Have you ever found any native oysters?
I've never seen one, but I, I've heard that there are some back there. We've had some natural settlement of Pacific oysters. So in warm summer months or late, even in October, excuse me, when the water is 75 degrees back there, you can get a limited amount of recruitment. You see a few Pacific oysters settling on, on hard substrates every now and then. And if you go along and look around, you'll see that. And that could be something that could change with climate change as we get, because if you go south of here... of here to bays like San Diego Bay, you'll see a lot of Pacific oysters all over the rocks. But we haven't, I have never seen the native oyster. And that's a species I really want to grow. And I want to try to encourage a restoration of the native oyster, which we know used to be in this bay in huge numbers. But it's been a long time and I, I would like to, I'd like to see when, you know.
Where, are, are your oysters available here in town, anywhere?
We're closed, yeah. I, I should mention that we're closed now, but I arranged to relay my oysters in Santa Barbara. So I'm going every week with a load of oysters, taking them out on a boat to Bernard's Muscle Farm off the coast of Santa Barbara. And we're hanging them in lantern nets for a week. And then we have to prove that they are clean inside. And then, and then we're bringing them back and they'll be, I'll be bringing a load in on Tuesday. Yeah.
So that's a different form of depuration?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's a more low-tech depuration. But it's a lot of driving.
George, when occasionally we'll see the oyster bags floating around in the bay and bring them back, are those of value to you to be returned?
Yeah, yeah, they are. And if they have a float on them, give them to Neal.
Okay. And secondly, with the Los Osos sewer system?
Yeah.
Any difference in numbers?
You know, the water, there's no, there's, there's nothing.
Nothing remarkable?
Noticeable yet at all. No. And so, but I'm really glad that Los Osos went to the trouble. And we don't have those, the seeps that were trickling, freshwater that had high numbers of bacteria in it are cleaning up, I think. I haven't heard, maybe you know about that. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
And next we have, coming to the podium, Lexi Bell of the NEP.
Hi. I have bacteria in my presentation, so we can talk about bacteria. So I just, I included a couple of slides since although I've come and talked to you all, there's other members of the public that may not have heard about some of our information, our State of the Bay report. And I try to focus on things happening in the Back Bay. So I'm going to talk about bacteria, oxygen, and eelgrass. So, and I have a few copies of our State of the Bay report. If anybody wants one, I can hand them out. I think you all have gotten one, but I can give you an extra if you, if you need one. So just to remind people who the estuary program is, we are a local nonprofit. We're not a regulatory agency. We are part of a network of 28 national estuary programs across the country. And those, all of our programs have been designated as estuaries of national significance by the Environmental Protection Agency. So we have this designation that comes from the Clean Water Act. And because we meet lots of stringent requirements, we are eligible for funding through that. But we are not regulatory in any way. We just bring people together to try to solve problems and protect and restore Moro Bay. That's our mission. So we work in the whole watershed. Cara mentioned, Cara mentioned watersheds. This is our whole Moro Bay watershed. This is San Luis Obispo outside of our watershed. Here is the end of Cal Poly and you get into California Men's Colony. When you come down Highway One towards Moro Bay, you see a sign that says entering the Moro Bay watershed. That's when you're in the, the area of land that drains into the bay. So all this land, when it rains, drains into the bay through the tributaries and Shore Creek, and then the tributaries and Los Osos Creek this way. So we work everywhere in that area, but I'll talk mostly about what we're doing in the Back Bay. One thing we do in the Back Bay is we monitor bacteria. So for the reason that the use is in the Back Bay, so the fact that people interact with the water through kayaking and paddling and swimming and growing oysters and fishing, these are things that you want to have low levels of bacteria. And there are certain standards that we want the bay to try to meet. So we have a crew of volunteers that goes out monthly to sites. And although this one's not in the Back Bay, we do have Back Bay sites. And they use a sterile method to collect water. And they bring it back to our mini lab. And they, we actually get, right now get lab space from the Moro Bay with current wastewater treatment plant location. And they get the sample ready, they process it, so it gets reagent added to it. And then after about a day, our staff comes in and interprets the results and looks at it to see how much bacteria is in that sample. So here's the results of all, pretty much all of our data we've ever collected in the bay. You can see in the Back Bay here, we've got two green dots and two yellow dots. So what that means is there's areas of pretty good bacteria levels that are relatively low and areas where it's elevated somewhat. And the yellow means about 20% of the time these areas are exceeding the standard for safe swimming. So safe swimming is not the same standard that the oyster farms have to meet for growing the oysters. It's two different standards because you don't have to have the water as clean to swim in it as you do to eat oysters out of it. So these are the areas where we remind people that this is not telling you that all the time that, that the samples are elevated, just 20% of the time. And because we only sample monthly, we can't tell you on Tuesday, if you go out and swim, it's going to be too high, the bacteria's going to be too high, and you're going to have a higher risk of getting sick. But we do tell people is generally, it tends to be more elevated after a rain event. So it's good to stay out of the water 72 hours following a storm to try to reduce your likelihood of getting sick. So this is just another way of looking at that, that there's two, these are the two sites where the, where we're exceeding that 10% threshold. So that's what the Back Bay looks for bacteria. And there was a question about the seeps and about the sewer system. So we're monitoring the freshwater seeps in the Back Bay. Back, oops, back here, there's a few freshwater seeps where the groundwater's coming up out of and meeting the, the bay water. And so we're monitoring that for bacteria. We have not seen a change with the sewer yet, but we're not anticipating seeing it right away because all that water's got to go through, you know, the soil and everything to come back out. So it's, we're thinking it's going to be a few years before we'll start to see a decline in bacteria. CDPH, Department of Public Health, is also monitoring nitrates as well from those seeps. So we haven't quite seen a change yet, but we weren't necessarily expecting it yet. Okay. So one thing that we do to make a difference for bacteria in the bay is our Mutts for the Bay program. So you'll see these around the city, Moro Bay, and in Los Osos and the Back Bay. We manage 27 dispensers that are entirely funded by private donations, businesses, and organizations. George is one of our funders. He helps fund a dispenser. There's many other local organizations that do so. And we've given out about over 350,000 bags last year. This is keeping out many, many pounds, up to tons of, of pet waste from entering the bay. And so the thing about pet waste is that once your dog or other animal goes to the bathroom, that waste, if it sits there and doesn't get picked up, it continues to be a bacteria source for up to a year. So every time it rains and something washes out of that, it, there's a source of bacteria for a long time. So that's why this program, as simple as it is, can be really effective. So we also measure oxygen in the Back Bay. Oxygen is important for any animal, fish, plant, marine mammal that lives in the bay and that's underwater, needs oxygen in the water to breathe. Marine mammals do come up to breathe in the air. And so they, they need this level of oxygen that will support aquatic life. And so we measure that to see if our bay is meeting that standard. We do it just after sunrise because that's when oxygen levels are the lowest in the bay because everything's been breathing up the oxygen at night and the plants haven't been photosynthesizing new oxygen because the light's not out yet. So that's, we get the, the lowest common denominator from this measurement. And we do it with volunteers that go out in their own kayaks and use our equipment once a month. And they bring us back this data. They are a very dedicated group of volunteers. And most of them actually have been doing it for almost this entire time, since 2002. So here's what the oxygen looks like in the bay. It's pretty fair to poor. You can see in the deeper channel, it's a little bit better because you get that flow in from the harbor mouth. But as you get back into the Back Bay, it's not quite so great. This is the lowest level that I mentioned. So during the rest of the day, there are times when it's reaching that fair to good category. But at the, there is time at the lowest common denominator that we're not having very high levels of oxygen back here, which can be limiting to aquatic life. So this, the big, a big reason for this is the structure of the bay itself. So we have a closed Back Bay and circulation's not great back here. It gets really shallow, like we've mentioned a few times. So, so the water's not exchanging with the tide as well as it does in the front part of the bay. As we continue to have sediment flowing down into the bay from the watershed when it rains, that exacerbates that problem. We have a partnership with Cal Poly and part of it is looking at water quality monitoring in the Back Bay. And the front bay is two different bodies of water essentially. And so comparing the, the oxygen and other values between those two areas to, to try to get a better sense of how that circulation's really working. And so a professor at Cal Poly is working on that. And we're hoping next summer we'll have some results from that, better understand how water is circulating in the Back Bay. But he did a preliminary study this, in July 2016, and it showed for that entire month, the, the water up here, more in the bigger, the north part of the bay, was not really mixing with the back part of the bay. Even with the tidal influence, it seemed to more be pushing that water back versus actually mixing up. But that was only one month. So we're hoping over the course of the whole year, we'll get better information on how that's working. So finally, I thought I would briefly mention eelgrass, since that's been a big topic of concern in the bay, particularly in the Back Bay. It's a very, you know, this is a picture of eelgrass. Looks a lot like grass, grows underwater. It's a flowering plant, but it's, grows underwater. And it is, supports a lot of aquatic life. So it produces oxygen. It 's shelter for fish and vertebrates that are juveniles or, or that are smaller animals. It provides food for black brant and other birds. And it helps slow the water down. So it helps bring sediment out of the water so sediment can settle down in the Back Bay, or down on the bottom of the bay, and the water can be clearer. So if you have eelgrass in the bay, you'll have a clearer water column. So we had a catastrophic loss of 96% of our acreage since 2007. And if you've come to other Harbor Advisory Board meetings, you've seen the map I'm about to show you. I'm showing here the brant, which we were talking about. This is the brant that, there's brant hunting season four. And you can see he's eating eelgrass right there. So there's a big connection between brant and eelgrass. As our eelgrass has declined, we've seen brant numbers declined here in Moro Bay, although they're not necessarily declining across the whole coast. They're doing okay across the whole coast, but just, they're not coming to Moro Bay anymore because we don't have very much eelgrass. So here's our bay in 2007. The green is eelgrass, 344 acres. We're mapped. We use an aerial flight that takes multispectral imagery and then we ground-truth it and, and make sure everything that's counted here as eelgrass really is eelgrass. And this is in 2015. We have 13 acres. It's pretty much completely gone from the Back Bay and we have some spots up here. So we've had a modest improvement of the past couple of years of maybe a few more acres. We've done some restoration. We're doing a lot of monitoring. We've done some research projects on what conditions the restoration is best working under. So we can try to focus our restoration in areas that the eelgrass is going to grow really well. But we certainly haven't gotten back to this. We're doing another one of these flights, hopefully in December. We're hoping for the right tide window and sun angle so they can see down into the water. So when we do that, eventually we'll have something on our website with a new map. And we're hopeful that we'll see a little bit more eelgrass back here. When we've been monitoring by stand-up paddleboard, we've noticed a lot of new patches, but not big beds. So hopefully we'll see some improved growth from that over time. So just in case you see us out on the bay, this is one of our monitoring coordinators doing science off of a paddleboard. Pretty cool. And this is the Cal Poly professor, Ryan Walter, test, looking at his water quality monitoring units that he has deployed for a year in the front and back bay that I mentioned earlier. Here's some more Cal Poly students helping us out with our monitoring and research. You might also see us occasionally with this sign, probably in the spring. And this is when we go out and do some, a pilot restoration project. This is our second year. We're using different methods to plant the eelgrass and try to improve our restoration success rate. So we've done a few other years that weren't as successful. So we went back to the drawing board this year with some new techniques, smaller scale study to try to get, get at how we can succeed, even if we can't get the eelgrass to come back in the Back Bay, other, other areas closer to the sandspit and the north part of the bay that we can improve the eelgrass acreage. And then this is a boat that was doing sonar survey for us. This is the first year that we did a sonar of the whole navigable area of the bay to try to get at where eelgrass is growing subtightly, which means below, where it never comes dry at low tide. Okay. So a couple of tips is to pick up after your pet and use our mutt mids dispensers or bring your own bag. Watch what goes down the drain, all the storm drains on the streets near the bay, drain it directly into the bay. There is no treatment. People sometimes think that water goes to the wastewater treatment plant, but it goes directly into the bay. If you come down to our office at 601 Embarcadero, you can look at that storm drain right there by that viewing platform and stuff comes right out. Turn off the tap. The more water we can keep in our creeks and in our groundwater, the better it is for our bay. And sustain a bay-friendly yard by planting plants to help keep erosion in check, keep our sediment on the land and not in the, in the water, and reduce water Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lexi.
Yeah.
Questions from the board? Bill? Jean?
No.
Dana?
No. Does NEP have any information regarding finfish and invertebrate populations and trending in the Back Bay?
So we don't have population information. I want to say more than 10 years ago, Cal Poly Professor John Stevens did a project to look at what is present, so what types of species are there, but not actual populations, so not relative amounts of those. And so we have a list, and I don't know them all, you know, many, a couple dozen of species of fish that he found. And this, in 2016, another Cal Poly professor replicated that same study without our eelgrass, with our eelgrass loss. So we can compare the change in the number of species. She hasn't released that data yet. But we don't have population numbers. So like, you know, 100,000 halibut versus 50 halibut, we don't have that information for the bay.
Any idea where the, when the study that you just referred to will be released?
We're always asking for, for that kind of information. It's difficult because, you know, our motivation is to use that information for management and to share with the public. And Cal Poly, of course, cannot get funding for those things unless they publish research. So it's challenging for them because they want, we want them to get funding. But I'm hoping that this summer we'll be able to do another eelgrass update like we did a couple months ago and present some of that, at least, you know, in this kind of a forum that's not written.
And you would let the Harbor Advisory Board know when you were ready, right?
Yes.
Yes. Are there any recreational activities in the Back Bay that, that NEP would like to give advice about? Things that are either good to do for the, for the Back Bay environment and things that maybe are not so good for the Back Bay environment?
Well, I think Cara points out a lot of, a lot of that in terms of the sea otters, other marine mammals, and the seabirds. And really, we've looked to state parks and the sea life stewards to do a lot of that outreach about those things. And I would say, one other thing we talk about with eelgrass is that if your boat runs aground in an eelgrass meadow, you can actually make a scar where the eelgrass gets taken out and it's hard for it to grow back. So we do try to remind people of that, like in the Coleman Beach area, which is not in the Back Bay. the back bay, but people often launch from there. I would say the other thing is thinking about just general disturbance of habitat. So doing a lot of tromping in the mud in insensitive areas, you know, people get stuck, and we talked about that earlier, and nobody wants to get stuck. But in addition to it being a pain for you, it's probably not so great for the environment because you've got to drag your boat out of there and you out of there, and it's a pain in the butt. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lexi. Now we're up to the Marine Mammal Center. Diana Kramer.
I'm a little shorter than the last speaker. Okay, so my name is Diana Kramer. I am the operations manager for the Marine Mammal Center in San Luis Obispo County. And I designed my original PowerPoint for more of a recreational audience, but I'm actually going to flip it and start backwards to forward, so it's more tailored to your interests. So. Okay, so the Marine Mammal Center actually covers 600 miles of California coast. Our headquarters is in Sausalito, and we cover Mendocino through Slow County. So here, myself and our team are the southernmost end of our range. The Marine Mammal Center is a nonprofit, and you can really think of us as a community organization, because not only are we a nonprofit in that we are privately funded, meaning through individual donations, but our volunteers save for this area are all from the local community. We are primarily volunteer-based group. So here in this county, I am the only full-time staff member. There is one part-time person, and everyone else is a Slow local who volunteers their time with us. Here in this county, we are basically a triage facility or emergency room for marine mammals. So when we rescue a marine mammal in this county, they stay with us just a few days to be stabilized, and then they go to our main hospital in Sausalito for their longer-term rehabilitation and release. And our broader mission is global ocean conservation, so that pertains both to the bay and the broader ocean, ocean environment here. Okay, so, let's see. For us, what we do is we respond to marine mammals that are stranded or in distress. So we rely, again, being a community organization, we rely probably 95% on calls from the public. So in the back bay or Morro Bay Harbor environment, that means people who are kayaking, paddleboarding in boats, or walking around the edge of the bay, and they see a marine mammal that appears to be in distress. What we do then is our teams go out and assess that marine mammal, and we determine both if it actually is sick or injured, and then does it need our help. For some cases, we don't respond to animals if they have an injury that they're healing fine on their own for. We leave them alone because there are stresses associated with a rescue and rehabilitation. But if the balance of that marine mammal is swayed to the fact that the assistance we can provide is greater than the stress we would put them under, then we would respond and rescue that animal. So when people are in the Morro Bay Harbor and back bay area, and they're looking at marine mammals, some common signs of distress are them being tucked, tucked up in a fetal position. So sometimes people do that too, when they're not feeling well, and marine mammals do that as well. Thinness and visible ribs or hip bones, that would be a sign that they are malnourished for some reason. Lethargic or unresponsive. And then, of course, visible injuries. Entanglements, unfortunately, we do see a fair number of marine mammals with entanglements from marine debris. The photo there is actually a sea lion that is currently on the floating dock in Morro Bay Harbor with what appears to be monofilament or gill netting entanglement. So we're hoping to be able to rescue that animal. It's just difficult because she is consistently resting on the floating dock, which makes a rescue very challenging. Harassment by people can also cause us to need to respond to an animal, particularly young pups. They can become separated by mom, from, from their mom by human activity. And then we are always happy to come out and check on things. So we always encourage people, not everyone who's in this area is familiar with marine mammals and may not know whether what they're doing is normal or not. And we're happy to come take a look and make that assessment, because myself and our volunteer team are trained to know what's normal and what's not. We have a public line, so like I said, people call us, and then we would respond. That sea lion there, you can see it's in the tucked up position and a little bit of visible ribs showing. That sea lion was actually stranded last year on Coleman Beach. And then you've heard this before, but basically, we recommend 50 feet. And what we like to tell people, because it's very hard for someone to know exactly what is 50 feet. So what we recommend to people who are doing recreational activities, either in the bay or outside in the ocean area, is if they're not using the zoom on their camera, then they're too close. Okay, so what I would like to do for these is just talk briefly about why we would respond to these animals, particularly in the back bay or Morro Bay Harbor sense. So of course, we are very lucky in Morro Bay that we have a great population of the southern sea otter. And the Marine Mammal Center partners very closely with California Department of Fish and Wildlife to respond to sea otters. We do see sea otters that have entanglements, usually monofilament line. We do see them with injuries, and we have had a few prominent cases of pups that have gotten separated from their mom. So those are all things that we would respond to. We also are lucky that we have California sea lions. They are mostly hanging out in the harbor, on the floating dock, but you do see them in other locations as well. These guys can have anything from different illnesses and diseases. You guys might have seen in the news that this year, primarily in July and a little bit of August, we had a domoic acid outbreak in this county. And the Marine Mammal Center here in this county, we rescued over 80 sea lions that were suffering from domoic acid toxicosis. I'm so sorry. So, and then, of course, like you saw, they have entanglements and different injuries that we might respond to. Harbor seals, we also have those in the harbor. They're noticeable, they're the only seals with spots. Interestingly, I have been with the Marine Mammal Center in this county for two years, and we have never rescued an adult harbor seal. For some reason, those guys, when they are sick or injured, they just don't come ashore. They are a little bit more skittish than other animals or other marine mammals. So we don't see them a lot. But what we do see is, we see a lot of harbor seal pups in the late spring that are suffering from eternal separation. And what happens a lot is harbor seals, after their pup is about a week old, the mom will leave the pup on shore or on rocks near shore and go out to forage. And then you have people who are kayaks, paddleboards, or recreationally walking on the beach, and they don't realize it, but they are blocking the mom from coming back because they are very shy, and the mom will never come back to a pup if there are a lot of people around. So after a certain time of this, the mom may actually abandon the pup. The other thing that happens is people are very well-intentioned and see this pup alone, and they make a very sad sound that sounds like a baby saying "mom". And they will actually sometimes pick them up themselves because they think they're alone and in distress. The other one that we saw that's really interesting this year in Morro Bay Harbor, and actually in the back bay, we saw a few cases, is the northern fur seal. Northern fur seals are pelagic, meaning they normally live out at sea. But we saw a few cases of young pups that had gotten separated from their mom for some reason. They're normally born on the Channel Islands, and somehow these little guys, they were about four kilograms, meaning eight, nine pounds, ended up coming all the way from the Channel Islands, all the way back by the Natural History Museum. We actually rescued one by the Natural History Museum, a little guy. So we did see a few of those cases in the back bay area. The other thing that I want to mention is the Marine Mammal Center, while we are a nonprofit, marine mammals are specifically protected by the Marine Mammal Protection Act. And that means that we have a federal permit to respond to marine mammals, meaning that we are authorized to cause that disturbance and to respond to the marine mammals. We also partner very closely with California State Parks and Department of Fish and Wildlife. So, for example, a lot of parts of the back bay may also be a state park area. So if we are going to respond to a marine mammal in a state park area, for example, we always call and get permission from California State Parks because they are managing the resources in that area. So we have a very close permit with them. The other thing that is important about that is because these are protected species in our area, only trained volunteers or staff member can actually respond. So unlike some other wildlife that you can respond to and actually pick up the animal yourself, because they are specially protected, only the trained volunteers can respond to the animals. And that is all.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Jean?
Have you had any elephant seals show up in the bay yet?
You know, we did have an elephant seal, but it didn't show up in the back bay. It was last year, and it showed up, I don't know if it has a name, but that beach out by the rock that's on the inside of the harbor, it's pretty much exposed only at low tide. We did have a elephant seal weiner, so a weaned elephant seal, come and rest on that shore. It's not too common, it's not a natural area for them to come in to rest, but we certainly could see more. They will start being born probably January, maybe December, although we do have two adult females that just showed up, up in San Simeon recently. So the season is getting started. So it's a little bit rare, but it does happen.
In one of your slides was the contact telephone number.
Yes.
If a, if someone is concerned about a marine mammal and they want to text the center, can they do that?
So we can't take initial reports by text necessarily, but we do have a text number where people can text us photos. So what they would do is call that main number, and then if they wanted to send us a photo, but they couldn't email it, which can be complicated, we're able to provide them with a phone number where they can text it. Now theoretically, they could text us, you know, text messages to that as well, but it's not a number that we have out to the public because, you know, just on our cards and stuff, because we don't want to be confusing with having too many different numbers. So they basically just call us, and then if they need anything, follow up by text, we do have that option.
And can you repeat the number, please?
Sure, it's 415-289-Seal. And we have that on all of our cards, and I did bring some there in case anyone would like one.
Okay, and given that the center is a 501(c)(3), what are your public fundraising events?
Yeah, so here in this county, we don't have a large, active development activities. So we don't have too many fundraisers that occur right here in this county. Ours are more smaller, so us being out at fairs and people giving us donations. Most of our fundraising events take place through our main hospital in the San Francisco Bay Area. The primary reason for that, well, there's two. The first is that we have very low staff numbers here. So I manage our facility, and we don't have specifically designed people to organize those. But the other reason that really holds us back right now is that we are not open to the public, being an emergency room. And so it makes it a little hard because we can't have visitor flow and people really seeing all the work that we do. In our main hospital in the Sausalito area, people can come and actually observe the animals undergoing their rehabilitation. So that really helps.
Well, last year, I attended an event where there was an auction, and I came down to this, was directed to come down to the center to pick up, being the fortunate winner of an item. What was that event?
Well, that might have been Pacific Wildlife Care. People get us confused a lot.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's no problem. Yeah, I wish we had an auction, but...
It was, you're completely right.
We are good friends and neighbors, but not related.
No, you need a local band.
I know, we should. It sounds like a great idea. We are working in that direction, hopefully so we'll have more activities. But really, being close to the public, just for the health of our patients, does kind of limit us a little bit.
And thank you for making clear the distinction between the two.
Yeah, I think you'll talk about that a little too.
Diana, I have a question about the otters. It seems over the last 20 years that I've been in Morro Bay and sailing in and out, the otters are getting very, very brave compared to their behavior 10 years ago, 15 years ago. 15 years ago, when you got within 50 feet, they would dive and run away. And now you can, they will be six to 10 feet from your boat before they will take any kind of evasive action. My boat's not very maneuverable. They're a whole lot faster. But so is there concern about their health and safety because of this altered behavior and their...
Yeah, definitely. This is not scientific, but my guess as to the reason for that is both because the population has increased and kind of unfortunately, they've grown used to people. We do have a great program that you've heard about with sea otter savvy and encouraging people to keep an appropriate distance, but unfortunately, not everyone does. You do see that a lot in Monterey Bay and Moss Landing as well, where people do make close approaches, the population is very robust, and they just get used to it. And that's not a good thing. We, when we're doing rehabilitation, we implement a lot of measures to keep distance and interact with the animals as little as possible, because for the animals' safety and health, it is good for them to stay away from people.
Have you had any injuries that you know of that were due to boating accidents?
You know, I have not heard of any confirmed boat strike. We did have a really interesting case of a sea otter named Otto. You can actually see him in Morro Bay Harbor now. He's visible because he has two flipper tags, rear flipper tags, one white and one chartreuse. That's neon green. I didn't know what chartreuse was until he got that tag. But it, I thought it was purple, it's not, it's neon green. But he's very charismatic, he likes to hang out at South Teapier. But he was a sea otter that over the summer, we got a lot of calls about because boats would pass right up next to him and even brush up against him, and he didn't respond. And he was just presenting some really abnormal behavior like that. And so we monitored him for a couple of weeks, and he kept doing this behavior where even more than you're saying, it was really just getting so close to him. And it turned out that that otter actually had domoic acid toxicosis. So we did rescue him, and he went through rehabilitation, and he was just released in September, at the end of September, back into the harbor, and he's been doing really well.
So the toxin makes him a little nutso?
Yes, it's a neurotoxin, so it does affect the brain.
How assertive or even aggressive is a sea otter mating activity?
It's very aggressive. So you will see otters sometimes with an injury on the nose. Those are generally females, and the males have a very aggressive way of biting the female on the nose. The interesting thing is that that can actually cause stranding of the female otter. She is bred right after weaning a pup, so she is at her lowest energy state because she's used a lot of her energy resources to nurse the pup. Right after she finishes that, she gets mated, and it's very aggressive. And so sometimes even just that wound can prevent her from maintaining enough metabolic energy to keep warm. And so we have had cases of sea otters that have come up on rocks or even stranded due to that. The other interesting thing is that it is a tactic that is specific to the southern sea otter. In the northern sea otters that you see in Alaska, they're a different population, and you don't find that aggressive mating strategy.
The reason I asked, I read that, so thank you for that information, but the reason I asked is I happened to be down on my boat on the dock, and I overheard some folks talking about the South Teapier and populated some of the otters there, and a woman called 911 because one otter was killing another otter.
Yes.
So that's, that's a normal mating activity.
Unfortunately for the female, yes, it is. The other thing that can look really scary is the males fight. We actually saw our released sea otter Otto fight another male, and they'll actually stick their heads up in the air and kind of punch at each other and bite each other, almost like cats fighting. And that can look really scary too, but it also is a normal behavior.
Is it territorial?
Yes, yeah.
Very interesting, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And last, Mr. Endersby.
Oh.
Do you...
You're on, buddy. Pacific Wildlife?
Yeah.
Oh, Pacific Wildlife?
I called, did I skip Pacific Wildlife?
You skipped Pacific Wildlife.
Pacific Wildlife.
No, go.
No, 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 please, you're excellent.
We're all similar, right?
No.
But different.
Sorry?
But different.
Different.
Very different, similar but different. Hi, I'm Kimberly Perez, I'm the president of Pacific Wildlife Care. And I'm going to show just a short, three-minute video to start and then we'll talk a little bit after that.
Hopefully this audio works. Chris, can you go up on camera?
Yep, we're up.
Three minutes.
For over 30 years, Pacific Wildlife Care has been a community educator and the first responder for distressed wildlife in San Luis Obispo County. County Animal Services, Harbor Patrol, State Parks, City Police, the County Sheriff's Department, and animal shelters all rely on Pacific Wildlife Care to rescue injured, sick, and orphaned wildlife. Anyone can call 805-543-WILD for reassurance, answers to wildlife questions, help with rescue, and advice for living compatibly with local wildlife. We are the only organization in the county providing these services. Through our educational outreach program, we teach young and old alike to value and respect wildlife and the environment we share with them. Our Wildlife Rehabilitation Center in Morro Bay is a refuge for orphaned and injured wildlife. Human activity has had a negative impact on many of the animals that are brought to the center. We see grebes and pelicans covered in oil, birds and mammals hit by automobiles, seabirds entangled by fishing line and pierced by fishing hooks, hawks caught in barbed wire fences, maimed by gunshots or electrocuted, songbirds caught by cats, eagles and turkey vultures lead poisoned by bullet-ridden carrion or poisoned by rodenticides, mammal babies orphaned by trapped parents, and the list goes on. The Pacific Wildlife Care Center takes in all wildlife, treats them humanely, and our volunteers work tirelessly to try and return them back to their native habitat in the wild. Our onsite rehabilitators and veterinarian are highly skilled professionals with many years of experience and training and are committed to providing the highest standard of care in the field of wildlife rehabilitation. They make sure every animal at the center receives a complete physical exam and treatment plan, adequate amounts of fluid and nourishment appropriate to the species, proper housing and caging, and follow-up care and pre-release conditioning. Over the past three years, Pacific Wildlife Care has cared for more than 8,000 animals. We provide life-saving medications, food, veterinary services, and supportive care costing over $340,000 annually. Volunteers donate over 27,000 hours of their time each year. Wildlife is important to our community. Thousands of visitors come to the Central Coast each year to visit our national bird sanctuaries and delight in our native wildlife. All of the creatures are important to keeping the ecosystem in balance and are as critical to our way of life as air, water, and sun. We believe it takes an entire community working in partnership to preserve and ensure the humane treatment, rehabilitation, and care of our wildlife. Pacific Wildlife Care does not receive government funding and relies on donations and memberships. For more information on how you can donate, join, or volunteer, please visit us online at www.pacificwildlifecare.org. You can also find us on Facebook.
So, as it says, we rehabilitate and release healthy when we can. That's the goal always, is to release wildlife back. We see all different species across the Back Bay, is inclusive. Morro Bay is our second-largest city receiving distressed wildlife harmed in some way. Specifically, I can't say from that, just that one area, because I think wildlife moves back and forth with, especially birds come from there, they go over to Moro Strand State Park, but in Morro Bay alone, it's about 30% of what we take in comes from Morro Bay. And most of those are seabirds, or shorebirds, or waterfowl. I don't know if I've seen a brant come in, I'm interested now. Now that we're talking about the hunting of the brant, I'm not sure how many of those we see, if there's ever injuries that come in from those particular animals. So we've been around for 30 years. First 20 was home rehabilitation. The last 10 have been as neighbors with the Marine Mammal Center. They're in their own facility, we're next to them. We're off, located off of Main Street and we, close to the stacks. People can call into our hotline, it's, like I said, like it said on there, 805-543-WILD. And they can tell us about an injured, orphaned, sick, or an oiled wildlife, or they can bring it in. Our facility isn't open to the public, but people can bring an animal in if it's safe to do so. Wouldn't recommend some animals to be brought in, but if you saw a baby bird on the ground, not as big of a deal. Or recently, we, you know, a seabird's pretty easy to drop something over it if you see that it's injured, limping, caught up in fishing line. We have all types of injuries. We have land and air mammals, about 18% of our client, not clients, animal intakes are mammals, land and air, not sea mammals, like the Marine Mammal Center. We take in 80% birds, all birds come in, and we have 2% of reptiles. We educate the public, that's another thing we do. We do over 114 presentations with some of our rehabilitated wildlife, not rehabilitated wildlife, some of our impaired wildlife that cannot be returned to the wild. And most of those are birds, we do have opossums and a gopher snake that was, someone had domesticated and once you domesticate an animal that is wild, you can't return it back to the wild, it can't survive any longer. So, people do confuse us with the Marine Mammal Center and those are the biggest differences right there, is the type of animal that it is. The types of injuries are probably similar sometimes, because we have animals that are shot or that are affected by lead or, as we talked about in the thing, but fishing line and fishing hooks are big on pelicans, some of the seabirds and shorebirds. You know, all of that bay area is just filled with wildlife, all types. Even an opossum could be back there, not in the bay, but on the fences and things like that, or raccoons. And so if you were to find it, you can call us. If you are able to pick something up safely, you can bring it into the facility, but you can always call that number and they'll give you the directions, how to come in there. We have over 290 volunteers. And we do have a full-time wildlife vet. She's the director of animal care, her name is Dr. Shannon Riggs. And we have five to six seasonal, full-time, and part-time staff. And it's, this is, we have a wildlife hospital in essence. As you can see, there's all kinds of procedures going on. The difference, though, is that we take it all the way through release. So we rehabilitate it, condition it, you know, a raptor that comes in, maybe picked up from somewhere, we have to get it conditioned so it can fly back out to the wild. Broken wings happen, gulls, we had a gull come in recently with a fractured wing off Moro Strand. And sometimes they just need the rest. They just need rest and food and we can release them back. Sometimes it has to be a surgical procedure. So, that's Pacific Wildlife Care.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Jean?
Anybody ever bring in a fish?
You know, some people have brought in crabs, I think, and we can't, we can't do anything with it. We're licensed by California Department of Fish and Wildlife and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, so we're licensed to do that, so we can't handle that. The only things we can not take in wildlife, we don't take in sea life, or sea mammals, but we also can't take in mountain lions, bears, or adult deer. We get a lot of orphaned animals, probably in the first part of the year, we have probably 900 animal babies that come in. Birds and...
Right here in Morro Bay? 900?
That's all, no. I would say, I'm going to have to say probably, because you're, Morro Bay is the second highest. We're all of Slow County. San Luis Obispo's very, up there with Morro Bay. It's about, it was about 800 animals, I think. So 30, I would say 30% of that came from, 30% probably is baby animals that come in.
Dana?
Yeah, so your facilities here in Morro Bay, they're adequate for the amount that you have here, or do you need more space?
That's a great question. You know, we have a very, we do have a limited space and you saw how the facility looks, that's as big as we can grow on the inside. On the outside, we have some caging and such that we can build, we have some more places for aviaries. Aviaries seem to be a great need. But we also have home rehabilitators. So when we're to, and we have other agencies that we work with out of the county, if we need to move certain species for rehabilitation and we don't have the space, or they have special needs, or they need more of their species in one place, you know, it's better sometimes to have a group. So we, you're right, we can't grow much more and we do struggle with space, but we use some of our volunteers have caging at their homes and just to rehabilitate, not on the medical side. You know, if it needs to be medically treated, we're jam-packed in the, in six months of the year with baby bird animal, or baby animal season, we're jam-packed in there. There's 90 animals in there, I think, right now. And this is our slow time, right? We've seen, last year we saw 2,700 animals and like I said, 80% is birds. This year so far, we've seen over 2,200, almost 2,300 animals, so. And last year, we had a seabird mortality event where there were a lot of grebes and some of the seabirds that were taking in different things, one of, you know, different ailments. Someone had a worm in there that, you know, you can't, a thorny-headed worm. And then sometimes it's just starvation from the youth, young ones from climate change, the food's too low down out in the ocean. Not necessarily in the bay, I think that's probably a good food source, as long as there is food.
You were talking about fundraising. What are some of the fundraising events that you do here?
Well, we have one, we just had an event last weekend, Superboration. We had two events this year. It's our 30th anniversary, so we did two events and we probably will do more of this. Morro Bay Wild was some tours. We had 48 people that came and toured the facility. It's not open to the public, so people are usually very fascinated to see all the pools and things. Even on that video, that's a 96-foot flight, not flight, but sea, pool, and caging with animals that need water. So, and we have other pelagic pools and aquatic bird pools. And then, so we had Morro Bay Wild tours for people to see, then we have Superboration and that's lots of soup tasting, 23 different soups were available, 14 restaurants. Sometime, in the springtime, we have something called Windows Into Wildlife and we didn't have one this year. Instead, we did Wild at Heart up at Swallow Creek Ranch. That was kind of a nature-filled day. We did a huge community event, youth-focused, family-oriented, called Wild in the Plaza, where we partnered with some of our environmental groups to come there and just had a day of people walking through Mission Plaza. It wasn't in Morro Bay, but again, we're trying to reach all of Slow County, but Morro Bay specifically is more Superbration and our tours.
Thank you.
None?
Looking into the future, how secure is the continued use of that facility for you folks in the center?
Well, that's a great question, given some of the information. We're looking into that. We are actually leasing, we're subleasing right now with the Marine Mammal Center. But, so the future is questionable if, but I think they've been very supportive of us. So we're trying to secure a more permanent space there, I think we both are. And we've come, we've worked a little bit with the Morro Bay City Council and we've working with DynaGee, but there's a, so we're trying to see what's going on with DynaGee right now. They could sell, they've been acquired right now, so we'll see what that means to Pacific Wildlife Care.
So DynaGee owns the dirt. Who owns the buildings?
We own the buildings. We own our own buildings. And all of the caging there is ours as well. And we put in the improvements on that space. So we have the sewer and the, all that, the water in the sewer.
What is, if I may ask, and it's none of my business, you don't have to answer the question, what is the term of the master lease? And I don't mean the money, I mean the calendar term of the master lease.
It's coming up. We've been in negotiations all year with DynaGee right now. It's coming up in a few years. We have it 2021, 2021 is when it ends, but we've been talking about it upfront, trying to extend that to longer and secure it. They've been very accommodating so far, but you know, economics are economics sometimes.
I don't know what in the world somebody would do with that little corner up against the, up against the hill.
That's, that's true. It is separate from PG&E's property and the power plant.
Has anybody suggested a value for that dirt?
Not yet, we've requested, yeah, we've requested more information from them. So that's the nego, the deal, what we're talking with them about right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Endersby is on. And I'm sure he'll have a lot to say.
So what do we do in the Back Bay? We're often the first point of contact for people who have concerns about fishery regulations and whatnot. We'll assist fish and game with enforcement or investigations as needed. We'll rescue Tony's kayakers when they go astray. We help care with their Sea Life stewards program with some water safety training when they got up and running and are involved with information on the marine protected areas. We rent George's dock space and help out both he and Neil wherever we can. And we work with the National History Program, they've been great with us, too, with grants and whatnot, and helping them with their programs and implementing their programs. PWC, we often bring rescued birds to them and we release birds for them, get them out to sea when they need them out to sea. Same with marine mammal, we'll help them rescue marine mammals as well. And kind of just in the Back Bay, although it's outside the city's jurisdiction, which ends at about the, in at Morro Bay, Fairbank Point. We'll go back there in an emergency in a heartbeat, obviously, but we're often in the Back Bay, just being first points of contact as people just end up calling us first for just about anything and we'll disseminate the information when we need to. Any questions?
That's all you do?
That's all we do.
Jean?
Hey, how much water does a jet ski need to operate in?
If you're up on a plane, it probably only needs about two or three inches. Floating, it's probably about six to eight inches. Not much.
Anything else?
for just about anything, and we'll disseminate the information when we need to. Any questions?
That's all you do.
That's all we do.
Jean?
Hey, how much water does a jet ski need to operate in?
If you're up on a plane, it probably only needs about two or three inches. Floating, it's probably about six to eight inches. Not much.
Anything else?
Two questions.
No, go ahead.
What, to your knowledge, is the most accurate charting that is available to the public of the Back Bay?
The electronic charting that you find on, you know, the standard commercial stuff that you get, their GPS is actually pretty darn accurate. You know, I've, I've found going back there, you'd think, well, high tide's the best time to go. Actually, low tide for us, because you can see the channels. And that channel stays pretty deep, pretty far back there. I mean, you want to know what you're doing. You don't want to just go willy-nilly, go back there. But those electronic charts, we've gone back there pretty far on those charts, you know, in inclement weather or fog, and they're pretty darn accurate. You know, those, you know, as things have gotten off of paper and onto electronics, you know, the electronic stuff gets backed up by real-time positioning of confirmation of the positioning. So, they're pretty good.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is, I was asked by virtue of being on the Harbor Advisory Board, I was asked this question a month ago and didn't know the answer. If someone would like to scatter the remains of a loved one in the harbor, is there any reason why they can't do that?
The current regulation, I may look over to my Fish and Wildlife wardens over here, but I believe the current regulation is, it's 300 feet or 300 yards from any shoreline? Used to be outside the three-mile limit, but that's changed.
I'd have to refer, I thought it was still three miles, so I'd have to refer.
Yeah, it's not the three-mile limit anywhere. I want to say it's 100 yards to 300 feet off of a shoreline.
Yeah, it's off the shoreline. And you are supposed to get a permit if you want to do that. You get, supposed to get a permit if you want to scatter ashes at sea, which costs nothing and is easy to get, and I don't know why they want it, but.
If people have that need, you can contact probably Verge's Sport Fishing, Morro Bay Landing, Dos Osos Tours, those sorts of folks that do that kind of passenger-for-hire work, and they generally know that pretty well because they do that. Papa Gaias as well. He actually does burials at sea, not just ashes.
I didn't know that. Lynn does burials at sea.
He does real burials at sea.
Wow, that's very interesting.
It's quite a permit process.
Permit process is nothing.
Let's shot through the campus, babe.
No, for the burial of a body, not just ashes.
Oh, oh, a body. That's quite different. A burial, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening. So, if the board is finished, we will now open this to public comment. Mandy Davis?
I wasn't sure if I was even going to want to comment, so I just turned one in. But as it turns out, I do. My name is Mandy Davis. I have lived on my sailboat on and off on the estuary for years, about 17. And I've worked as a guide primarily in the Back Bay for, matter of fact, are you guys considering the Back Bay from Fairbanks Point back? That's pretty much, yeah. Anyway, yeah, most of the time that I've guided, and it's been for about 15 years, I'm, I'm a naturalist and guide, and I've spent a lot of time. So, I noticed there were a couple of questions about the Back Bay. I work for a guide company, and we do guide all of our people back there. We have a pretty extensive knowledge of the area because we have to. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer. I did want to answer a question that you had, or at least to make a clar, you know, clarify something about the two NPAs and, and the borders. The two NPAs back there, it's my understanding, because I have spent a lot of time dealing with the hunting issue. And during that time, every two years, the commission looks at and has potential to change the hunting laws. If you want to contact them besides, you know, any kind of infractions or anything that's going on on a daily basis, or you were asking about who to contact, it absolutely is the Fish and, well, it's not Fish and Game anymore, it's Fish and Wildlife Commission in Sacramento. And you can go to the meetings if you are looking into actually asking changes to be made, et cetera. They do those changes on the hunting laws every two years, and you can find that out. I've had to deal with this pretty extensively over the years, as some of you may know. And as far as the NPAs, they were describing the, the management area that Fish and Wildlife is, is within their jurisdiction. But there's also the State Park jurisdictional area, which is another NPA, and that, that is a no-take zone. And that goes from just about, you know, pretty much Pasadena Point to the Marina entrance, maybe a little bit east of that. And it's posted just east of where that line is, and I can tell you exactly where the line is. And then, the line that goes across goes through the big grassy island over to Fairbanks, and that's where the, the NPAs start back there. So, it's, it's, it's pretty clear. You know, it's just been a great process of being a guide back there because what we do is, we do spend a lot of time with the wildlife. We see what goes on seasonally, et cetera. And it's been really nice to be a part of the processes of letting people know their responsibility to being responsive to the wildlife. It's their home. We need to make sure that people understand that, they're respectful of the space, and it's, it's been really a huge part of our job as a guide. And I've also heard, you know, a lot of the people that are running these, especially the people at the Kayak Shack, which is what I'm, we operate out of, they have done a pretty good job of letting people know, you know, it's a low tide, these are the places you want to stay out of, these are the reasons why, you know, here's the wildlife. But if there's one comment that I could make, that if the, the city of Morro Bay could, you know, you know, get some or add some funds to some of these projects, these educational projects, of getting the word out to the general population that are out there on SUPs, kayaks, et cetera, about their responsibility to treat the wildlife appropriately, to stay far enough away, to be respectful. You know, anything helps out there, the placards they have, things that can be handed out, leaflets at the rental places, anything that could help us that are professionals out there to let people know, you know, don't be a yahoo out there. Be respectful. That would be really a wonderful addition. Thanks a lot, you guys. This is, this was very informative.
Thank you, Mandy. And next, we have Mr. Martony.
Good evening, Bill Martony. First off, I want to thank everyone for holding this and all the information. It's just been terrific. You know, a lot of new information that even, I've been around for a while, but it was really, you know, informative. And actually, I just had one question, and I think it was of Fish and Wildlife. I was a little confused. In the beginning, I believe that they mentioned it was a no-take area for fishing in the entire Back Bay. In the front part of the bay, it was fin fishing, but you couldn't take crab and clam. And then, later on, I believe you made a comment that, you know, sharks and halibut could be fished in the Back Bay. So, I was a little confused on, I, you know, saying there, you know, it was kind of a no-fly zone for fishing, and then you mentioned the fishing that was allowed in the Back Bay, so, excuse me. So, I just didn't know if there's any clarity, or if I misunderstood, or if there's certain areas of the Back Bay, there was no fishing in other areas that, you know, were, if that, you know.
Thank you.
So, I can deal with you afterwards to further clarify, but if we look at the Morro Bay Harbor as a whole, so the entrance is a marine, a marine recreational area, and it goes to approximately Pasadena Point or Pasadena Park. So, all that's open to fin fishing. If you go south of that Pasadena Point towards the Back Bay, or in the Back Bay going south, that's closed to fin fishing, to all fishing.
So, you're talking Pasadena Point and not Fairbanks Point?
No, I'm talking, yeah, Fairbanks Point is open.
Okay.
So, Pasadena Point south in, so, familiar where the, the pier, like the Baywood Park Pier?
No, I don't.
So, south of that's going to be all closed, because that's going to be part of the, the reserve area, or it's part of the marine recreational management area, but it's closed to fishing. And then, the reserve, that's going to be closer to the State Park Marina going east.
I'm not sure about that.
And that's going to be closed to fishing as well. If you look on your map, I don't know if it's, that's correct. It's all closed to hunting, yeah. The only areas you can hunt is in the wildlife area, and that's going to be all inside the bay, and that's going to be totally outside, no hunting there. So, hopefully, that clarifies it, and I can get you with the afterwards and kind of show you on a map if that works as well.
That clarified it, yeah, I was thinking Fairbanks Point backwards, and I was still taking it, but I clarified it as fast as possible.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
If there are no other comments, we will close public comment. Any additions from the board? Thank you for coming. Thank the Harbor Department for arranging it, and your reports were excellent and very informative. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? So moved.